Okay.
Mine's off.
Yes, so good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education. We are calling to order this meeting. We do have one public comment from Alejandro Bambay.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to talk about case number 2324-10. A matter of the recommendation for expulsion from my son. I just want to say if there's any way you guys can possibly not go through with the recommendation, I'm asking for a second chance for my son to return to school and continue his education in regular school. I know my son made a mistake. He regrets it. You feel like he's not a danger to the school or any other students. If anything, he was being bullied and he made a choice to deal with it, not in a good way, I should say. And he does regret it. So if you guys could please give him a second chance and let him return back to school so he can go back to learning and school and stuff. So I would greatly appreciate that. I mean, he's young, he made a mistake. We all make mistakes. So if you guys could please give him a second chance, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those comments. Do you have any more comments?
None.
Okay. That being said, we will adjourn to closed session. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee. It took action to approve those charges and released employee number 662633 by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified substitute employee. It took action to approve those charges and released employee number 656351 by a vote of five to zero. That is the end of our closed session report. I do need a motion for our agenda this evening.
I want to make a modification to, I propose a modification to the agenda.
That's right.
Can we move items N. 2 through 6, which were the education services actions for the expulsions? Can we move them up either right before consent or right after consent agenda?
Yes. Does anyone have any comments?
I don't care.
And move approval of the agenda with that modification?
So we could do it right before consent?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five to zero with those amendments. And yet the approval of amendments.
I'll move approval of the amendments.
Second. We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. I want a D. 1 recognition.
Yes, so once again, we are ready to recognize our students who are receiving the Student Excellence Awards, our SE Awards. So we've invited some of our school principals here to share some information and also to highlight some important aspects of their students. So we're going to begin from Hidden Valley Elementary School Principal, Buriana Norton. Good evening. Would you like the students to come up or wait until we go to the slides?
Wait till you go to the slides.
Wait till you go to the slides, okay. Thank you. So, good evening, Dr. Ibarra, President Houston, and members of the school board cabinet and our union presidents. Thank you for your time tonight to recognize some of our amazing Hidden Valley students. I'd also like to take a moment and thank all of the staff and parents that are here to celebrate these students. Our school community is truly, as you all know, extraordinary, and they always have a unified commitment to nurturing and uplifting our outstanding students. So Hidden Valley Middle School has begun to embark on a transformative journey that nurtures a dynamic learning environment where our students embody the attributes of our EUSD learner profile, which we all know: creative problem solvers, empowered learners, empathetic collaborators, ethical scholars, effective communicators, and critical thinkers. Our evolving practices at Hidden Valley Middle School have also embraced the learning model of personalization, authenticity, inclusivity, and equity through the assistance of our newly and recently created HV student forums that are providing us with invaluable insights into our students' school experience. By also engaging our parents through feedback, we're gaining essential perspectives that in turn will empower our students through their increased voice and choice that is grounded in their strengths and interests. Through these transformative experiences, HVMS students emerge as well-rounded individuals equipped to navigate the complexities of the modern world. So, at HVMS, our students are dynamic problem solvers. They're engaged in immersive, hands-on learning experiences that ignite creativity and hone their critical thinking skills. Recently, really a couple months ago, our seventh graders delved into practical problem solving as they embarked in going to Powellmore Hospital where they received firsthand training in essential medical techniques such as applying tourniquets, mastering casting methods, administering CPR, and ensuring safe patient transport. These interactive sessions not only imparted technical skills, but they also nurtured the students' ability to adapt to dynamic situations, and again, through critically. By bridging theoretical knowledge with real-world scenarios, our students emerged equipped to confidently assess and respond to medical emergencies and also laying a foundation for their future success if they so choose to enter into the field, into the medical So at HVMS, our students are empathetic collaborators, and this is woven into every aspect of our students' educational journey. From engaging in science experiments to tackling group projects and social studies and math classes, they learn to value teamwork and collective problem solving. Utilizing group whiteboards, as an example in our math classes, as a tool for demonstrating their learning fosters a sense of camaraderie and it also encourages peer support. Additionally, our web program exemplifies collaboration as eighth graders take on mentorship roles, guiding and supporting our sixth graders in their transition to middle school. Furthermore, our commitment to restorative practices is evident in our community circles where students come together to discuss and resolve conflicts collaboratively while fostering a culture of empathy and understanding amongst peers. Every Hidden Valley student is also an ethical scholar. We embody this across all of our classes as well as our elective courses. Whether delving into literature, exploring history, or diving into their elective subjects, they uphold integrity and honesty in their academic pursuits. In science labs, they adhere to the rigorous ethical standards, ensuring the integrity of their research and experimentation. In humanities courses, they engage critically with diverse perspectives, and they demonstrate respect for intellectual property and academic integrity. Moreover, in their electives like art, they demonstrate a commitment to excellence and authenticity, recognizing the importance of originality and creative expression while respecting the work of others. Through their dedication to ethical scholarship, our students not only excel academically but also contribute positively to their learning community. So now the best part, we get to talk about the kids that are highlighted. So if I could have our three students come on up. Addison, Delilah, and Sahara. Come on up. I'm going to talk about each of you. So I get to talk about Addison first. Addison is in sixth grade, and Ms. Montgomery had these wonderful things to say about you. Addison is one of the most kind-hearted students. She comes to class every day with a smile on her face and a growth mindset. She enjoys reading narrative stories, and she's always willing to participate in class discussion. Addison always tries to seek out the best in everything that she does, and she's always willing to help her classmates do the same. Addison Koetzer. Our seventh grade student of excellence, who also did our pledge of allegiance, Delilah Gany. Delilah's positive attitude and her ability to brighten a room is second to none. She always has a smile on her face, and takes the extra time to always help other students in class. However, don't be fooled, she's not a pushover. She will communicate her opinions, but she does it in a respectful, and she is always the utmost ethical scholar in the process. She's a hard worker, and she takes setbacks in stride. Delilah Gany. Our eighth grade and final student of excellence from HVMS is Sahara Asanti. Sahara is the kind of student every teacher wants in their class. She is focused and driven to complete all of her assignments to the best of her abilities. Creating high standards for herself allows her to produce the most amazing work, and she excels in whatever she attempts. She is kind and compassionate, and she works well in groups collaboratively, and she brings her talents and strengths to the table by helping her team be successful. Check this out, she's not only one of our web students, which mentors our sixth graders, she's also in our ASB program. She takes the opportunity to, like I said, help our sixth grade students, but she also leads awesome events on our campus. Sahara Asanti.
Your one job, Frank.
Next up, we'll be inviting up Principal for LR Green Elementary School, Principal Crystal Underhill.
This is like deja vu. Okay, good evening, Board President Houston, Superintendent Dr. Ibarra, and EUSD cabinet members. Thank you for this time to honor my wonderful students, parents, and staff from LR Green Elementary School, unless Ms. Audrey, I think you'd like to. Okay, so let's get started. Thank you for the honor. Every LR Green student is an empowered learner. Whether it's through learning the ukulele, coding a robot, or becoming a performer on stage, LR Green students are empowered and unlocking new modalities of learning. And I'm still learning. Every LR Green student is an empathetic collaborator. LR Green students empathetically collaborate with all students. Through our various programs, deaf and hard-of-hearing, SESB, preschool, and TK through fifth grades, students learn what it takes to collaborate with empathy. Every LR Green student is an ethical scholar. It is through our school redesign that LR Green students and families are taking to heart the challenge of showing how LR Green's ethical scholars can learn, inspire, and grow together. Now let's take a look at a few of LR Green scholars. So I'd like to welcome up Archer Christensen, Ruth Aguilar, and Anmula Azami. These are all amazing fifth graders at LR Green, and starting with Archer Christensen. Archer embodies the word integrity. He is continually being recognized in and out of class as a helper. Whether it is with our kinder buddies or with his classmates, Archer is always there with a helping hand and continually models strong citizenship throughout the LR Green community. Archer goes above and beyond in all his classwork. He always finds ways to improve by actively participating in class, asking questions, and helping others. Archer is a strong critical thinker who pushes himself in all academic areas. Congratulations. Okay, next up is Ruth Aguilar. Ruth is a fine member of her class who sets a wonderful example to all. She strives to complete every single assignment carefully. The best part is when she has a question, she asks, and when she learns that she has made a mistake, she corrects it. Ruth has also made tremendous progress in reading and math, increasing in her I-ready scores by an entire grade level in only four months. She is mature, polite, respectful, and friendly. Congratulations to Ruth on getting this well-deserved award. And last but not least, Anmula Azami. He has worked exceptionally hard this year in his English language development program and in his classroom. He has finished the Lexia program already this year and continues to put an immense amount of effort into his classwork, all with a positive attitude. He always strives to complete his work and help others in the classroom. He's a true inspiration and role model to those around him. His teachers greatly appreciate his ability to embrace new challenges and consistently exhibits an eagerness for knowledge.
And next, we'd like to honor Lincoln Elementary. Principal Hawke will come up to showcase his students.
Thank you. I'd like to thank President Houston, board members, Dr. Ibarra, cabinet members, as well as our Lincoln staff members, Lincoln preschools here tonight, our Lincoln family members, Lincoln educators who are over here as well. And I am aware that Lincoln's staff members are joining us tonight on Zoom. I want to let you know I do see you up there. So thanks for spending four consecutive days on indoor recess, rainy day schedules. I know that's on the principal, but you went the extra inning and joined us here tonight. So thank you very much. At Lincoln School, we believe that every student has the right to a quality education, and it is our responsibility to make that dream a reality. Those words were collectively pieced together by our staff three very short years ago. They stand as our north star, our cause, if you will. The future of our Escondido community is counting on our children, and we depend on their own unique personalities, characteristics, and super skills to add value to our Escondido community as it continues to evolve for the betterment of humanity. That is our responsibility, our truth, which we hold in our very capable hands. Besides, who wouldn't want to make our world a better place? Tonight, I would like to give you a glimpse into what Lincoln School is all about. And then I have three amazing scholars that I will be recognizing as they contribute to the progress our Lincoln family has made. At Lincoln School, we are teaching our students to become ethical scholars. Whether you're involved in Ballet Folklorico, embracing and teaching others about your culture and heritage through the arts, or developing your technological skills in our STEM program to make the tiniest adjustment that could one day make an enormous impact on our community, you do it in the pursuit of making a positive social impact on those around you. Just recently, our LINE TV crew used the power of video broadcasting to influence our scholars to participate in the Great Kindness Challenge. Before we knew it, the message had spread schoolwide, and all were engaged in the simple act and powerful process of spreading kindness across their school community. There are many ethical scholars at Lincoln School among us, and it is no wonder that our world is becoming a better place. As Lincoln continues to transform into a learning community, students are becoming effective communicators. For example, in our Functioning Skills Program, students learn diverse ways of communicating with the support of our all-star team of dedicated educators and paraprofessionals. Our team builds on students' unique perspectives and learning styles as students learn how to best adapt to and engage with our ever-evolving community. In a couple of months, our nation will recognize Autism Acceptance Month. At Lincoln, every month is an opportunity to celebrate getting closer to understanding the unique learning styles and superpowers each of us possess. We build on strength. Most importantly, our students are becoming better prepared for the global community and job markets dependent on their unique skills and ability to become, that's right, effective communicators. Finally, Lincoln is filled with empowered learners. Our Lincoln family is proud to announce that our dual-language immersion program continues to expand each year. We can see that our students can and will continue to achieve high proficiency in both English and in Spanish. They perform as well as or even better than students who are monolingual on both reading and math exams. Our dual-language students develop greater cognitive ability, increased attention and memory, problem-solving skills, and an enhanced understanding of their primary language, ultimately becoming more than just a lifelong learner, but rather an empowered learner. You ought to come and see their culminating fieldwork after visiting and observing the Santa Lejo Lagoon. To witness our students engage in public speaking in multiple languages, communicating problems and potential solutions is a whole new level of thinking and learning for our students. It brings us joy to see them begin a pathway that begins at Lincoln, travels through Mission Middle School and beyond, in an effort to receive that California Bili literacy seal you see on the slide before you. Now, I am just a principal, but who wouldn't want to see that on a college or career application? I certainly hope some of our students eventually come back to their hometown right here in Escondido and choose the field of education with a bilingual credential. My goodness, that would make our world a better place. These are just a few things we are very proud of to share about what is going on at our little school called Lincoln. Now, I would like to share with you the very best part of Lincoln School, some amazing results, some of our fine scholars. So if I could please invite up here Leonardo Reyes, Melanie Afquino Hernandez, and Nylee Ariano. Leonardo Reyes. At Lincoln, here are some nice words that Mrs. Tran actually wrote about him. Leonardo, at Lincoln, many fourth graders have exemplary traits and commendable achievements. A fourth-grade superstar who shines above many is Leonardo Reyes. Leo is an extremely dedicated, driven, and self-motivated student. Since the start of the year, Leo has set some academic goals for himself. After 100 days of school, Leo has earned over 100 AR points. On the recent I-ready reading diagnostic, he made 137% of his stretch growth. And at Lincoln, we say not typical growth, stretch growth, 130% in half of this school year. Very impressive. When you hear him read, you are immediately charmed by his enduring expression. In math, Leo consistently earns top scores and can show you how to multiply and divide in a variety of different ways. He continually challenges himself in class and participates in several enrichment activities like STEM after school. Most notably, Leo remains a humble and kind young man. Through all his academic success, he never hesitates to support his team members in learning. He shows admirable patience and calmness when helping others. He not only sets a great example as an older brother to his little sister, he is also a beloved leader by his peers. Leo always demonstrates the pillars of being safe, respectful, and responsible at Lincoln, and for all these reasons and many more, Leonardo Reyes is more than deserving to represent fourth grade as the recipient of the Student Excellence Award. Congratulations, Leo. Nylee Ariano. Ms. Catalan has some wonderful words to share about you. From preschool all the way up to fifth grade, Nylee has continued to demonstrate her dedication towards her academics, positive social growth, and making positive impacts on the Lincoln School community. Throughout her journey in the dual-language program, Nylee has demonstrated language proficiency achieved in bili literacy and bilingualism in English and Spanish. Nylee continues to demonstrate academic success and readiness by continually going above and beyond in achieving her goals in our class assessments. I-ready, I-station, accelerated reader, Nylee continues to demonstrate above-grade-level mastery. In addition to academic accomplishments, Nylee has demonstrated outstanding leadership outside the classroom. Nylee participates in the Lincoln School video production- Nylee participates in the Lincoln School Video Production Club, LINE TV, where she writes, edits, and produces short films. It is no doubt that Nylee is a well-rounded individual who excels in everything she does. She is an upstanding and caring person who never hesitates to help others. She perseveres and accomplishes everything she sets her mind to. Congratulations, Nylee. You deserve the Student Excellence Award. And finally, Ms. Valdez has some wonderful things to say about Melanie. Melanie. Melanie is a fourth-grade student in our Functioning Skills Program. She has formed part of our Lincoln family over three years now. Melanie has shown a lot of personal growth this school year in her class, but also at home. That's right. What she learns at school also transfers home. She's a very sweet and generous and kind student who genuinely enjoys checking in on those around during the school day. Melanie has a lot of friends. She's a very popular student at our school. Melanie spends her day greeting peers and staff during her encounters, and she will look out for her classmates when they are in need. Who wouldn't want a friend like Melanie? She has become a positive example for her peers in the area of social traits and continues working for positive praise along with stickers to add to her rather robust collection. Melanie's amazing growth this year is a testament to the power of goal-setting. It is an example of her willingness to work alongside her teachers and parents to help her succeed. We are very, very, very proud of Melanie's progress and the hard work she does day in and day out. Melanie, your entire Lincoln family agrees that you are very deserving of the Student Excellence Award. Congratulations.
And next, we'd like to invite up Coordinator Lorraine Silva, who is in charge of our state preschool program.
It's all about them, so they get to come up with me for the whole thing. Good evening, President Houston and Board members, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. I'd like to take this time to honor and recognize our families that are here that are such great teachers at home and also for our staff from our preschool, from our state preschool. I'd like to talk about these three students, and I'm going to talk about the preschool program first. Our program is currently serving 271 students, many of whom start the day they turn three years old. They walk into our classroom right after their third birthday, and we really look forward to continuing to serve our youngest learners in the upcoming years. We are currently undergoing our program rating review, and we are on track to score a five in all of our eight classrooms, which is the highest rating possible. Every day, our staff focuses on concept development. Teachers are facilitating children's broader understanding of concepts and ideas rather than concentrating on rote instruction and recall the facts. We're already tapping into that higher-order thinking that they have. Another main focus is social-emotional learning. Students are taught to not only recognize their own feelings, but also to express how they feel and how to respond to those feelings appropriately. They also learn empathy, caring, integrity, compassion, and respect. So I would like to highlight three of our wonderful state preschool students and share what their teachers have to say about them. So at the state preschool, every student is an empathetic collaborator, and we're going to start with Adrian right here in the middle. Adrian is a special student who cares deeply about his friends and is always ready to help them. When he noticed that several of his friends were feeling left out, he came up with the idea of including others who looked like they needed a friend. Adrian's ability to come up with solutions that benefit both himself and his peers is a testament to his empathetic nature. His approach of including others who may be in need of a friend not only shows his kindness, but also promotes a sense of inclusivity within his social circle. When there were multiple students wanting to play in the same area, he suggested using a timer and taking turns. Because of his kind and considerate nature, other students are drawn to him and want to play with him. Adrian is an excellent example of an empathetic scholar. Adrian Vazquez. At state preschool, every student is a critical thinker. We're going to talk now about Lorenzo Martinez. Lorenzo joined our EUSD State Preschool Program last August. He was one of the youngest scholars in his class and tried his best to keep up with his peers. He's looking around the corner. That's where you go next, buddy. He was age-eligible to return to our program this year and has demonstrated growth developmentally, academically, and socially. He has learned to be an effective learner by being inquisitive and by being a problem solver. He demonstrates empathy towards his peers by offering support when it is needed. When his peers are asked, "What kind of friend is Lorenzo?", their reply is, "Lorenzo is a kind friend. He helps me." We would like to recognize Lorenzo Martinez for being an outstanding scholar and friend. At state preschool, every student is an ethical scholar, and today we're going to highlight Natalia Aquino Ledezma. Natalia is a confident, independent learner who takes initiative when working and engaging with her peers. During large and small group interactions, she is ready to participate and is confident with her responses. She is kind, patient, and respectful towards her teachers and peers. She enjoys helping others when in need. Natalia is a role model in our classroom and is nurturing and loving towards others. She shows respects to her peers when engaging in classroom activities, and she is there when friends need guidance. Natalia is a great example of an EUSD ethical scholar. So once again, Adrian Vazquez. He's one of our Juniper preschool students with Ms. Sanchez, Lorenzo Martinez preschool with Ms. Medina at Lincoln, and Natalia Aquino Ledezma with Ms. Castañeda at Lincoln, who happens to also be our preschool teacher of the year.
All right, you ready? Smile. Smile over here. There it is. See it?
Oh my God, I love it.
How are you doing, guys, folks? Hello, Board members, Cabinet. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. Congratulations to all the students recognized today as an alumna of Lincoln Elementary. I'm always happy to hear the good things that are happening there. As a member of Schoolside Council at Far Elementary, I was delighted to hear that the district is considering applying for a grant to introduce Community Schools concept to EUSD. For the public who may not know what community schools are, it's a approach where local school agencies, aka the school district and schools, work closely with teachers and students, families, and community partners to increase student outcomes. Community schools provide an integrated focus on academics, health, and social services, youth and community development, and community engagement. This has the potential to really give our students and families a great opportunity to overcome barriers inside the classroom and outside as well. So as a parent and a community member, I wholeheartedly support this consideration, and I hope the district decides to move forward with applying for this grant. As long as this is done right, with all the stakeholders' input, this will be a game changer for the students and families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next will be Casey Vallow.
All right. Good evening, President Houston, Dr. Ibarra, members of board and of the Cabinet. It really is heartwarming to see the students being honored the way that they are. It's just wonderful to see. But we also can't forget that we have so many equally wonderful students with great potential who have very little chance of being honored that way without receiving the extra support they've been identified as really needing. And so I'm coming here to talk to you tonight about our concerns about the state of special education support at Bear Valley, the onboarding of the two new pairs that we're getting, notwithstanding. We feel that the support system for special education has been broken for a long time, as evidenced by our high turnover of special ed teachers and extended paraeducator vacancies. Students who need support go without. It results in poor learning outcomes and then often poorer behavior choices as a result. Those poor behavior choices affect the learning environment for all students, again, reducing learning outcomes, and then the cycle continues. Students are stressed, teachers are stressed, case managers are stressed, and the paraeducators that we do have are stressed. At Bear Valley, we did form a committee to meet and discuss the situation and brainstorm ideas. With so great support from our principal, who's been wonderful, we greatly appreciated that. He's helped us work with outreach to help advertise our need of paraeducators through ELAC, PTA, Thrill Share to help recruit for the hiring events. And we've offered the suggestion of maybe providing district PD to current employees to help prepare them for the required testing and get them ready for being prepared for a job. Because we have had that in the past where we've had like NTSs who've wanted to do that, but they just aren't ready for the test. And so we've shown that we want to be part of the solution, but there's not a lot we can do if we're up against a broken system. We're trying to hire candidates for a job that nobody wants. It's really difficult to attract the candidates. The hiring process is really lengthy and it's inefficient. We're not making the job attractive. Like, in terms of pay, their starting pay is comparable to what they might make in fast food with a lot less responsibility. Once we do get hires, they receive minimal training. They don't get any prep time. If that wasn't enough, their caseloads are unmanageable. And so then we can't keep people. We need a robust, in-house, a very agile strategy that we have some flexibility with, to be creative, to provide support for our students with special education needs. Because what we have now, really, it's not working. Our students are getting left behind. The problems for these children, they're compounded every day, every week, every month, every year, that they're underserved and not getting what they need. We've lost quality special ed teachers. We've lost quality paraeducators. And we're losing the kids. So something's got to change. And please, please, please prioritize this. Please, we've got to do better. That's it.
And last is Tanya. Hello. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, and thank you so much for introducing the topic of the great and dire need of paraeducators within the Escondido Union School District. My name is Tanya Pastor. I'm a mom of two boys who both attend the school district, schools within the school district. One of the most poignant things that I saw during my oldest son's IEP meeting this last year is a writing sample. He was given a prompt during his English language class, and the prompt was, "What are you thankful for?" This was right before the holiday break. His response, "I am grateful for my aides. I am grateful when I am able to ask for help." He has... Excuse me, I'm nervous. It's no wonder that he is grateful for the paraeducators who are there for him. Since TK, the paraeducators have often been his eyes, ears, and voice throughout the day. For the paraeducators who assist him in all of his functional needs that he's not able to do on his own that a teacher's too busy with. It's paraeducators who assist him in group projects to make sure that his voice is heard. It's paraeducators who he can count on when he gets confused, dysregulated, overwhelmed, during class time, during assemblies, or really any other situation during the day. He can count on a paraeducator to explain assignments, advocate for him, and help him feel safe at school. Because of paraeducators, my son was able to attend sixth-grade camp last year. The amazing paraeducator assisted him in all the functional activities that would have prevented him from attending. She encouraged him every single day to get involved, whether or not he was homesick. She communicated with my husband and I so that we felt that he was safe there. Because of that paraeducator, he not only made it to the end of sixth-grade camp, he actually performed at the talent show. He exceeded all of our expectations, and he couldn't have done it without her. Now, on the flip side. Every time I receive a call or an email about his behavior, I always ask, "Where was the paraeducator?" 99% of the time, a paraeducator was not at class time during that incident. There are often days when I hear that there was no paraeducator to be found. There are times when the teachers and case managers have to push into class to assist him. These are during times when they're supposed to be prepping for their own classes because a paraeducator is missing for him. Year after year, I wonder why I get to hear the never-ending story about how there are not enough aides for him. As a parent who knows that her son's success in school depends on these professionals being for him, I'm telling you, it is maddening. I do not work in the HR department, and I don't know what the feedback exactly is about the district and why they... the district and why they cannot maintain these individuals, but I do know that this affects everyone, not just kids like my son. It affects the teachers, it affects the other paraeducators and aides, it affects the other kids in the classroom, and the overall morale of the school. I also know that this district has an opportunity to be innovative in the ways that they incentivize, hire, and train these valuable resources. I have a whole list of ideas, and that's just me. Sounds like other people do, too. This is a problem that we have a moral and also a legal obligation to solve, a legal obligation for most of these students. This cannot wait. We need paraeducators now.
So moving on to public, we have now going to our CSEA Chapter 150. And we are going to have no report from the EEA this evening. Moving on, and we are going to move down to, was it?
End two.
End two?
Yeah.
All right. Regarding item N2, case number 2023-24-09, move for expulsion through end of the first trimester of school year 2425 with possible reinstatement to a TRAC program of the district's choice upon successful completion of the contract.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll vote a second.
No, that was. I'm sorry, second. I apologize. Second by Ms. Gardner.
Thanks, Frank.
Sorry. We're going to be going to roll call on this. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes five zero.
All right. Reference item number N3, Educational Services Action Upon Student Expulsion, case number 2023-24-10, move for a full expulsion through 6524. Expulsion to be suspended with immediate placement in a TRAC program at a school of the district choice. Expulsion will go into full effect with immediate placement at JCCS if the student violates any ed code is truant or does not fully participate in TRAC.
I'll second.
Motion of a second. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Harper.
Aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes five zero.
Item N4, case number 2023-24-12, move to accept the panel's recommendation.
You have a second?
Second.
And a motion of a second. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Harper.
Aye.
Mr. Olson. Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Regarding item number 2022-23-15, move to accept the reinstatement of the student.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Harper.
Aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes five zero.
And regarding case number 2022-23-16, move to accept the panel recommendation of reinstatement.
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Harper.
Aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes five zero. Moving back up to the consent items. Do we have any items that we want to pull for consideration or discussion?
We'll do a per of us present it.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second, or a motion of a second on the paper.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Back down to L1, the LCAP mid-year review.
Ooh, let's do it. Do it.
All right, well, good evening. Today, we will be providing a mid-year update on the implementation of our current LCAP plan for this school year. And so while this is a new requirement this year, it's an additional step to share the mid-year outcomes and the implementation data for the LCAP plan. We also feel, though, that it's very timely, as we just completed our second diagnostic of the IREDDI assessments for the winter window. So it is an opportunity for teams to use this information, to discuss, to review, and to make adjustments. Our school sites have also spent, and are spending, quite a bit of time also looking at their specific school results as they continue to use that information to guide their work as well. Additionally, we know that we have had some distinct efforts made across the district that were implemented this school year. And so we also know that it will take time to see the impact of those initiatives. This is a nice peak to assess how those are going. And again, we're so grateful to all of our amazing staff that are part of that implementation process. And so we are going to be able to also see through the presentation, we also make some reference to some of the specific goals and metrics that we had shared at the beginning of the school year, being able to show the progress of some of those key initiatives. So we'll revisit some of those as well. And so next, I'm going to be handing it over to Kathleen Sorensen, our Director of Program Evaluation and Accountability. She'll walk us through the data.
Good evening, President Houston, Board members, Dr. Vara and Cabinet. I'm pleased to be able to share with you the results of our winter diagnostic to IREDDI. So we're going to start with our reading results, and we're going to look at all of the student groups. And just as a little bit of a review, IREDDI looks, when students take the IREDDI test, they receive a scale score, and the scale score equates to an overall relative placement. And those overall relative placements are at or above grade level, at grade level, early on grade level, sorry, I'm messing them up, mid or above grade level, early on grade level, one grade level below, two grade levels below, or three or more grade levels below. So IREDDI says that when students first take the test in the fall, that a typical student that's on track would be one year below grade level, because this is a standards-based test. Students are taking a test on end-of-year standards. So those students that are in yellow in the fall are exactly where they should be. Students who are in those green shades are doing a little better. So here you can see our all-student group on the far left, and you can really see some great improvement in that all-student group. There's a 12% increase in the students that are in the green and a 9% decrease of the students in the red. Then when you move on to our English learners, the number of students in green has more than doubled with a positive increase of five, and the students in red have decreased by 12. Then if you look at our students with disabilities, you can see that our students who are in the green increased by six, and the students in the red decreased by, or decreased by 10. And that's in all of the special ed or students with disabilities data, we did see that they are really doing a good job at decreasing that percentage of students that are three or more years below grade level. Now we're going to take a little bit of a deeper dive and look at grade levels. So here you can see the kindergarten on the far left. You can see actually a 31% increase in students who are at the early-on grade level or mid or above grade level. First grade, there's a 19% increase and an 8% decrease in the percentage of students in red. In second grade, there's a 15% increase of students who are early on or mid or at grade level, and a 16% decrease in students that are below grade level. Then when you get to third to fifth grade, that's when you start to see kids that are two or more grades and three or more grade levels below. So here you can see third grade made phenomenal growth, 16% increase in the greens and a 13% decrease. Fourth grade made a 7% increase with an 11% decrease in the red. And fifth grade made an 11% increase with a 10% decrease in the red. Then finally, we have middle school, and you can see that our sixth graders made a 6% increase in students that were early on or mid or above, and a 6% decrease in students that were below grade level. Seventh grade had a 5% increase in the green and a 7% decrease in the red. And eighth grade, you can see, had a really nice bump with a 7% increase in the green and a 7% decrease in the red. Now we'll move on to math. And again, we'll quickly look at student groups. On the far left, you'll see the all-student group. And here, we had a 13% increase in math, in the percentage of students who were early on or at grade level, and a 13% decrease in the percentage of students that were below grade level. And one thing that we noticed is that not only were our scores stable, but they increased quite a bit, which is a little bit unusual in a year that you have a new adoption. So the new adoption is rolling out very well, it's being supported very well by our coaches. So the result is, is that we're not seeing the drop that you often see when you get a new adoption, so we're very pleased about that. Then in first grade, we have eight, or I'm sorry, pardon me, we're on student groups, we're English learners, we had an increase in seven and a decrease in the reds of 15, which is great. For our students with disabilities, we had a 12% decrease in the students who were below grade level and a 7% increase of the students who were in the green. Now we'll go quickly through the grade level math. Kindergarten made an amazing 20% increase in students in the green. So that's phenomenal. First grade made a 17% increase and decreased their percentage of students that were below by 16. Second grade made a 13% increase and decreased their students in red by 24. Then if you look at third through fifth grade, third grade had a 16% increase of students who were early on or at grade level, and a 17% decrease for students below grade level. Fourth grade had a 14% increase in students who were early on or mid or at above grade level, and a 15% decrease in the students in the red. And fifth grade had the same numbers, actually. Then if you look at sixth grade, sixth grade for middle school, that's a pretty good game. Sixth grade can be a challenge in math in particular. Students are not only getting used to a new school, but the math is quite a bit different, so we often see a decline. And here, we had a 9% increase of the students who are really on or mid or at grade level, and a 9% decrease. And both seventh and eighth grade had a 6% increase in students who were early on or mid or above grade level. And seventh grade had a 6% decline in students in the red, and eighth grade had a 9% decline. Now we're going to talk a little bit about stretch growth. When we talked about IREDDI at the end of last year, or the beginning of this year, looking at the scores from last year, we really took a deep dive into stretch growth. So just a little bit of a review of what stretch growth is. In IREDDI, we have two types of growth. We have annual typical growth, which is the typical growth that any student would make as they progress through a grade level. As they progress, they're learning about the standards. They tend to start to master the standards as they go through the grade level. So IREDDI has, after looking at the test scores of millions of students, they've been able to determine, based on where students are, what the annual typical growth should be. So we're looking for at least 100% of annual typical growth, but that's just average growth. For a student to be able to really grow, to move up from the red to the green, they need to make that stretch growth. That stretch growth is a more ambitious goal. So this is an example of a report from a fourth grade student. So you can see that the student made 20, I think it says 21 points growth on their diagnostic, too, and you can see that they actually went from red to yellow, and they made 66% of their stretch growth. So they're well on their way to making that 100%, because you want to make, the 100% is expected at the end of the year. So that's great. But there's also a little note, which is very difficult to read in a small font, that it's going to take a couple of years of meeting stretch growth for this student to be at grade level again, because really, it looks like they're in, they're a fourth grader, but they've gone from being at a first grade level to a second grade level. So it's great growth, but we need to stay on that student. Okay, now we're going to look a little bit, or look at our actual stretch growth, comparing last year's winter stretch growth to this year's winter stretch growth. And one of the things that we really want to look for is that in the wintertime, we have as many kids as possible meeting that 50% of their stretch growth. So this is a little different in terms of how it's set up. So the red with the pattern is students who have made no growth at all. And then it goes all the way up to the blue, which is students that have already made 100% stretch growth. So those students are right where we want them to be. And one thing that IREDDI has identified, and we see it in our data, too, is the students who are most likely to meet the stretch growth are the students that are already at or above grade level. So they tend to be, in all the kids across the country that take IREDDI, that's the group that meets the stretch growth the most. So it's a lot harder to get the students who are below grade level to meet that stretch growth. So that's what we've been working on. So here you see our reading, and you see that while it's not, we're not seeing as much growth in the stretch as we would want, the thing that I do see is that as we're progressing through the grade level, you can see that we're getting closer to having more kids either yellow or above, because yellow is 50 to 75%. That's where we want to be. So as you get to second grade, the good thing is, we're still maintaining that there's more kid, that as the grade levels progress, there's more kids at that yellow or above. Then this is our third through fourth grade, and there is a little bit of a bump in fourth grade, just a very slight bump. Then if you go to sixth through eighth grade, there was actually a 1% increase in sixth grade and a 3% increase in seventh grade of the students that were at least, made at least 50% of their growth. Now we're going to look at math stretch growth. And here, kindergarten had a 1% increase in the students that were 50% or above and a 1% decrease in the students that had no growth. First grade had an increase of four. First grade had an increase of four in the percentage of, or students that were fifty percent or more, and a decrease of one in no growth. And second grade did really well. They had a bump of five percent of students meeting fifty percent or more, and a decrease of four in the students at no growth. Then if you move on to third through fifth grade, fourth grade had a decrease of one percent in no growth, and fifth grade had a five percent increase of students at fifty percent or more, and a four percent decrease of students with no growth. Then if you look at sixth through eighth, sixth grade had a three percent increase in students with fifty percent or more growth and a three percent decrease in no growth. Seventh grade had a two percent increase of fifty percent or more and a four percent decrease. Now we're going to talk a little bit about intervention. So you may recall that we presented some goals for what we wanted our intervention students to, what our goals and objectives were for them. So our objective is that students who are receiving tier-three interventions, of those students, we'd like to increase the number of students who reach the seventy-six percent or more stretch growth goal. ELA, we want to increase that by twenty percent, and in math, we want to increase that by fifteen percent. So now we're going to look at how we're doing. So this is a chart that's showing the students who are currently in intervention now, and it's looking at their stretch growth last year compared to their stretch growth this year. And you can see that there's stretch growth, because we want them to be seventy-five percent or above. We're looking at the green and the blue. So it went from eleven to seventeen. So they're plus seven on their way to meeting that twenty percent difference, but that really works out to, the percentage difference of that is fifty-four percent. So it's a nice bump. Then here, you can also, this shows you where everybody is. So you can see that even in intervention, it's still, we're still struggling to get the students who are three or more grade levels below up. But they are moving. And this is our math intervention. This is one of my favorite charts. This shows that of the students in our math intervention now, eighteen percent of students are meeting their stretch growth goal. Last year, that same group, it was ten percent. So the goal is fifteen percent by the end of the school year, and we're over halfway there. And it also represents an eighty percent increase of students who are at that stretch growth level. And then here, this is math. This is also showing the dramatic increase, pardon me, decrease of students that are in the red. It's a decrease of ten in the red, and then the three or more grade levels below, and a decrease of four in the two or more grade levels below. One of the things that is important to note for our math intervention is that that particular program is using a program called Bridges. Bridges has a progress monitoring system where the students get a progress monitoring assessment every five days. So we have been able to set up a system in Performance Matters, which is our data warehouse system, that actually tracks and graphs student progress. So teachers are really, really looking at what the students' strengths and weaknesses are. So if students don't meet a certain threshold on that test, then they go back and reteach. And that progress monitoring really seems to be making a difference, because this group that is progress monitoring is getting our best results.
Excuse me, and so just the intervention teachers are using Bridges, or all the teachers can use Bridges?
Just the intervention teachers. It's an intervention model that particular, that works on numbers and operations and calculus. Any questions about the data before we move on to the wheel?
So I mean, it just, that's exciting, that's very exciting. Like, I was very excited to see the iReady results so far. I mean, those are tremendous growth. We're trying to shrink that, those reds and the light reds, and I mean, that's all in a great trajectory, it's looking like. But it does kind of go to your, you know, the suggestion that a lot of our interventions need to be focused on the younger grades, you know, that we can keep them from getting so far behind, especially when you're talking about the stretch goals, that it's going to take them three-plus years, you know, with their stretch goals. If we can keep them close to standards or above standards earlier, that helps them in the long run. So I'm kind of heading towards that mind of, we should pull all of, most of our interventions in the younger grades to keep, keep the foundation there and build from there. Would see what those stretch goals are kind of pointing towards.
We also wanted to revisit, this was a slide that we had shared initially when we were presenting about our wheel and our team collaboration focus. And so many of these goals actually focus on data that we don't have access to. It references our CASP, the CHICs survey as well. But we did just want to, and we have discussed the academics and the iReady assessments regarding, regard, for all of our students. But we did want to try to have a sense of what that school connectedness component, what that might look like for our students, because that's what the CHICs focuses on. And so we wanted to go ahead and take a look at that, and so we were able to survey our students in the elementary who are experiencing the wheel and had a couple of questions for them. It was an anonymous survey, and so they were able to go ahead and respond if they looked forward to coming to school on the days that they had wheel. And then you see the, what's displayed there with ninety, about ninety-two percent of our students that responded, so that they did look forward to coming to school on the days that they had wheel. Additionally, we went ahead and asked our students these other questions as well. How much did you enjoy this class? And so you have there the statement of about seventy-five percent who were saying that they did enjoy the class, approximately twenty-one percent thought it was okay, and then three percent saying that they did not enjoy the class. But we wanted to go ahead and share all of their, their voice in this. With the question, did you learn something new? Again, we have about seventy-six saying that they, that they did, twenty said that they kind of did, and then four percent saying that they did not.
Were you able to ask them any questions about if that makes them want to come to school those days? I mean, because attendance was also one of our motivations to provide that enrichment towards them.
It was, but the way, the format of the questions that we asked didn't actually do that, but we could, we're hoping to correlate data to kind of take a look at the attendance based on the days that, when they have wheel versus days that they don't have wheel.
Okay, so we'll get that. Yes. Okay, perfect, thanks.
And this was a voluntary survey?
Well, the, it was given in class, and it was anonymous, though.
Anonymous.
Yes.
Do we know what, how many people took the survey?
For this one, we have about forty-three hundred students who took the survey. The next piece there we wanted to revisit was another slide that we had presented previously. This had to do with chronic absenteeism. And so as you recall, we have a couple of measures in place, but we wanted, our goal was to see a ten percent decrease in our chronic absenteeism. And again, that actually references, it's a term used describing any student that is absent for ten percent or more of the school year. And so what you can see here, we went ahead and took a look at the chronic absenteeism rate last year, which was thirty-seven point six. And so we are trending better this year and seeing that decrease. Currently, as of now, when we pulled that, it was twenty-eight point two-seven. And then some other items that are included in our LCAP, and that references our social emotional group and individual supports. And so again, just sharing information regarding the implementation or the services provided. That team, with counselors and social workers, have completed approximately four hundred assessments, and those have to do with threat assessments, risk assessments, any type of psychosocial assessment, as well as supporting students with 504s, 504 plans. Additionally, then, they, you can see there the number of actual service minutes that they have provided in either group or individual sessions, serving approximately one thousand one hundred and five students. Another piece we wanted to share was just about around our family engagement activities. And so this is information from last year, where we had offered the, excuse me, the activities, one thousand six hundred and ninety-six activities for all of last year. And those continue to increase with our family liaisons and our school sites providing more opportunities for our families to come onto campus. And so thus far, we have one thousand one hundred and thirty-six logged family events. And then for participation, as far as our families that are coming onto campus and participating in those offerings, we're just showing the number from last year total compared to where we are right now. You can see that our expectation is we would exceed the number of, the amount of participation for, from our families. All right. Any questions?
Let's start, Mark.
I don't have any questions.
No questions?
Thank you.
Very detailed report, thank you, for the efforts. I know it was a lot.
Yeah, I was, yeah, it was a great report. I was wondering, what do you, in your opinion, and not to put you on the spot here, so don't feel like you have to answer right now, but we're all sitting here, no, I'm just kidding. What programs have you, when you're going through the data, what programs have you found to be the, like, most beneficial that we, that we've implemented? I mean, because we, and we're getting to the point, we're going to have to make some choices, or are there any things that stand out to you that are really, you're really seeing an impact?
That's a great question, and I know that we'll be engaging in some of those conversations.
But that, yeah, that, it doesn't have to be answered now, but that's kind of, I would like, you know, your department's thinking on that, of where have you seen the biggest impact from our LCAP dollars go and reflect in our data and our students?
Well, one of the pieces Kathleen had mentioned that was our map data, which is really, we're happy and pleased to see that information. There's been a lot of work around making sure that we have that MTSS system of support at the school sites, working with our teams, really looking to see, looking at the data, going through that process of monitoring, and that frequent assessment that's kind of connected to the Bridges program. I think that that has been one particular highlight that we've seen. Well, there are many, many things, though, that could be contributing factors that I know that we'll dive into.
Perfect, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I know we're going to get to it, but that, that's kind of my thinking of, you know, what, what's really showing that impact to our students.
One thing that I've been noticing as I've been walking through the classrooms is the elementary schedules this year actually have common schedules. Because of the wheel, because of all the things they had to squeeze into a day, the grade level now has a common, they are teaching math at the same time they're teaching. So what they've added is a universal access time for math and language arts. That's the time where if a student needs to be pulled out for a tier-three intervention, they're being pulled out, and they're not missing the primary instruction, because that's what was happening, you're missing, you're going here and there. But what allows the teacher to do is then they, during that time, they're pulling a group as well, and targeting what they need to do. And then the other students are doing independent work. Oftentimes, what I'm starting to notice, what I notice is, they're working on iReady, they're working on Zern, like, applications that are focused on where they are and what they need to do to kind of reach proficiency. So that, it's that schedule that I've been noticing that doesn't cost money, but it's a common practice that they're all utilizing, and a lot of them are using it very effectively. That I'm also seeing is the collaboration that's happening among, especially all elementary teachers, is that they're now sharing what they're doing during that time. They're working with the principal there, so they're sharing ideas and they're maximizing those different times as well. From my vantage point, I see those are very effective strategies that we've implemented.
How long have we been doing the iReady?
Third year? Third year?
Okay.
During COVID.
Right. And so I'm, I'm wondering, have we done any longitudinal study to look at this year over year, to look at possible growth and how much each group is growing over years, or is that something we're looking at doing in the future?
We have done some of that, yes, and we absolutely can bring that forward to share. We'll continue to be looking at that as well, though.
Because you're right, Doc. But Mr. Paulson, when you look, compare year to year, we're looking at different students, right? And it's like, the students that have gone from kinder all the way through third, fourth, fifth grade, you know, what does that look like?
Yeah, it would just be nice, now that we've got several years behind us, to see how is, not the students, but the, how is the group progressing? Or are our test scores low at the beginning of each year, and then they, they shoot up as the kids get back in the swing? And so it looks like, oh, we're making progress, when maybe we're not. So, so that would, that would be good. It does look like we're showing some really good academic growth, and that's, that's certainly what, we're certainly very happy about that. That's, that's it for me, thank you. And we have been watching the dashboard, and it looks like we've got, had some very good news that makes the district look very good on the dashboard as well, just confirming these growth, this growth.
So I would just suggest that this would be a good time to, to start with, because there have been new adoptions and we're through the COVID part, so that, that will no longer be an excuse, and to start at kindergarten and follow the cohorts, because it's, that is where the proof will be, if we can see that. What disturbs me the most is to see the no progress at all, and as the grade levels go on, and I, you know, some of that, because it's been years, and they always say, by third grade, if they're not literate, it gets harder and harder to catch up. And we, we heard that with how long it takes to, to go up a grade level, even, to recover a grade level. But it looks like a lot of hard work is going into this, and...
And remember, the two to three year, it's a cluster. So you may be a third grader, it's going to take you two years, like, two years of growth to get out of that, that group, because it's a huge, and you could be, like, if you target the students who are right at the cusp, you can do that. But it's really, like, what the teachers are also doing is, the students now, as we're looking at empowered learners, a lot of teachers now have this practice of showing the kids where they are. So they're looking at their own individual growth and setting goals for themselves. And they get to see the progress for individual, like, I went from here to here, and that's, again, the most meaningful, and the parents are getting those progress reports so that they know where their child, where their children are.
That intervention where they can monitor every five days and see their improvement, I think that, that will make a big difference as well. It's true.
And I do want to give a shout out to our TK teachers, because our TK program is really robust. Our TK teachers are doing an amazing job helping the students get ready for school, learning how to be ready to learn. And what I'm seeing the kindergarten teachers now are able to do, where their writing is... And what I'm seeing the kindergarten teachers now are able to do where their writing is, is coming along, a strong focus on writing, strong focus on phonics, where they're really able to now engage in a lot of this, this learning. So, and you saw that from, from the data. They're, they target those students that are really struggling when they come in. And they're, they're really getting them through. And, you know, you're right, getting it early and hitting it hard is, it's, gotta focus there. But we also have needs from the other one at the other grades, so.
Not letting them fall behind, to, to start with. Starting with kindergarten.
Yeah, to start with, exactly. But it is a lot of hard work on the teachers. I mean, walking through the classrooms, you can tell how focused they are. And all the, you know, all the new programs they're working with and really trying to bring all those students up. You can tell, you can tell they're working hard on it.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work going into this.
I just, I just had a couple of things that I wanted to kind of understand a little bit clearer. The stretch growth is about a three-year progression. Is that correct? So if you have a child that's three or more below, the expectation is it's gonna take three years to bring that student up to grade level?
That is an expectation. There are students who...
Well, that will obviously do better and do worse, but the, the basis or the, the average would be, your goal is within three years, you're gonna take that, that student and bring them up to grade level within a three-year period. And that's, and that's the goal.
Correct.
So...
And that would be reconsidered reasonable?
Exactly. So what is our goal for those students that are in sixth, seventh, and eighth? What are we, what are we, as a school district, doing for those kids that are below two or three grades? That obviously were, for some reason, and mostly it's the COVID and everything else that's been on that. What are we doing to assist those kids so that when they get into high school, they're going to be at least at grade level? I mean, looking at the math results, you have 20% that are at or above, 27% that are one grade below, 13% that are two, and 40% that are three or more. So I realize it's kind of late in the game, but are we doing anything to assist those students that are at the 40, at three levels or below, or the 13%? Because the one grade below, that 27%, could probably, you know, with a little bit of effort, when they get into high school, make that, get back to where they need to be. But the, but the other 53% of kids that are not, what are, is there a plan? Or is there any type of intervention or anything that we can do to at least, you know, I mean, granted, I realize we're not gonna, we're not gonna get them from three grades below to grade level in one year. I realize that. But is there anything that is being focused on those particular kids that are in eighth grade? Because it's almost like we're kind of shooting them away, going, hey, sorry, we couldn't help you. Good luck in high school. And I don't, and me, I feel very empathetic for those kids.
Absolutely. There's a definite sense of urgency to do everything we can for those kiddos. Absolutely. What we have in place is, at our middle schools then, we have our intervention teachers. As you know, there's two intervention teachers, specifically, two intervention teachers that were just recently added this school year. And they already had one intervention teacher prior to that. And so really in working with that MTSS system, that multi-tiered system of support, is really working with our schools on ensuring that they have specific exit and entry criteria where students are identified and then they are being able to be put into those tier three intervention classes. And so that is part of their schedule where they are able to be in a small group with very intense instruction. And that's, that's what's in place currently for those students.
And I just, that's just my, one of the things that I noticed, that career growth. I mean, I, I think that we're doing a fantastic job, so please don't take my questions as, as I don't feel anyone's not doing their, their job or anything. But I still see that there is that large group of students that need that assistance. And I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind so that we can also focus on them. Because as you're saying, it's a three-year progression or goal to get them back up there. So those kids that are already in middle school are actually behind the wall and may not get. And I just don't want them to be forgotten, if that makes sense.
Yeah, if I could just add a, a second to Mr. Houston's concern about those middle school, upper elementary students who are far behind. But if I could just ask a question of anybody in Cabinet or Dr. Ibarra, to what degree is this just an issue of us offering additional tutoring, additional instruction? And to what degree is this a motivation thing? So in other words, we can provide the best instruction possible. But to what degree is the best instruction, the best tier three, tier two interventions? But to what degree does, is this also involving the motivation, the attraction at that age within our escondido community to other pursuits other than academics? And, and how can we resolve, can we resolve one without resolving the other? In other words, is this just a matter of academics and our interventions? Or is this also a greater community problem?
I think that's a really another great question. I believe that part of our work also, especially with that age group, we have to be looking at their engagement and their feeling of connectedness to the school, which hopefully would foster, right, that motivation. I think that there's a lot of work that's also happening. If you think about our Framework for the Future, kind of really looking at our shifts in our culture of our schools and trying to make them exciting and, and engaging by our robust ELOP offerings, from really looking at, trying to work with teachers and teams and kind of allowing some level of creativity as well, where they are being able to design lessons that are engaging for students, whether that's hands-on learning and project-based learning. That's, I think, another layer to the problem or to the challenge as we're trying to address the significant academic needs, as well as acknowledging that this idea of engagement and student connectedness to school is another factor that we're also trying to tackle. And there's kind of several parallel paths that I think that we're all trying to tackle this challenge.
Thank you. And within our ACES and ELOP offerings, do we have either remedial or acceleration or enrichment opportunities for students who want to take, who want to improve their skills?
Absolutely, we do. We have, offer both. So at, on a campus, you have some classes that are focused on kind of academic intervention, some that offer enrichment, and then some that are truly just kind of interest-based.
Thank you. But, so one last thing, and then I will stop belaboring the point. For a student who is seeking, or parents who are seeking assistance for their student, and the student has some level of motivation, do we have, do we have adequate interventions and support?
Yes. I believe that, well, we offer, on all of our campuses, I, we offer any one of those, whether it's intervention during the day. I mean, I think, I would encourage any family member, any parent, to really connect with their school and have a conversation, to really understand what resources are specific to that school site. But absolutely, I mean, I think we're very fortunate that we do have all of those ELOP offerings that kind of be, they're able to offer that well-roundedness of, to meet the different needs of our students.
Thank you.
So I was listening to the conversation, and I'm, I'm just thinking, the one thing we can provide are the parents. We need to engage the parents more and reach out to them more to help them understand how important it is that they take an interest in their child's education. Because I think that's, that's really a key to a lot of this. And I also wish that, apparently we can't forbid cell phones, but we can require, according to school policies, we can require that they're not turned on. And there should be consequences attached to the fact if, if they're being used when, when they're not allowed to be used. Because I think that distraction, not just for our kids, but I think, and again, I'll even say for the parents who don't engage with their children because they're too occupied with their devices.
I was gonna say, just go to a restaurant, you'll see what role models we are too.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not, it's not healthy. And it's not helping the kids. And I think that's where a lot of our problems are coming from now in education.
Anything? Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, moving down to N7, digital vote. N1.
Good evening, Board, Cabinet, everyone in the audience. Tonight, remember a few more meetings ago, we came before you and presented a project list and kind of an update on our Proposition E, general obligation bond that supports our facilities program. Of course, not long ago, we were all at Del Dios doing ribbon cutting for their, two of their new buildings that we placed there. But tonight before you is an item to authorize us to now move our facilities program forward once again by now selling our Series E of this bond. And so I have here actually also an announcement, our, our financial advisor we've been working with for a lot of years, as long as I've been here, Tim Carty, actually retired here at the end of December. And this, this young man here with me, Jim Kim, he's been working with him for as long as I've known as well. And he stepped right in in a seamless transition. And so one thing I wanted him to do tonight was to explain the three attachments that are on this item for the board so that you're fully aware of what we're asking you to vote on. So Jim, would you like to take that here?
Thank you, Mr. Maguire. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. As Assistant Superintendent Mr. Maguire noted, my name is Jim Kim, and I am now in charge of managing the District's general obligation bond program. So I am here this evening to, in the process of taking the next draw under Proposition E, to provide you with some information specifically related to the items that are before you for your consideration to approve this evening, and what are the purposes of these documents. To effectuate a bond sale and built into every GO bond program like ours, there is a transparency mechanism whereby every time we take a draw, we must come before the board to seek your approval to sell our bonds. And the bond resolution does exactly that. Should you approve the bond resolution, you authorize us to go out and sell these bonds to the investment community. It also lists a few of the financing parameters related to our upcoming bond sale, such as the not-to-exceed amount of our bond sale, in this case, up to $11 million of bonds to be sold. In addition to these financing parameters, it also proves the two additional documents, the preliminary official statement and the purchase contract. The preliminary official statement has some blanks in it, and that's by design and intent. And those blanks will be filled in once we sell the bonds with the financial statistics related to the bonds that we sell. These are the face amount of the bonds, the interest rate on the bonds, and the repayment schedule. Now, the preliminary official statement gets used to sell our bonds because it will be distributed to the investment community. And in it contains some relevant information about the district and about our bonds that will help the investors make the determination on whether or not to buy our bonds. So some of the information that the investors will glean on and get from our preliminary official statement are the district's financials, like your audits, your budgets, your interim reports. In addition to that, we have information related to the tax base. Because obviously, these GO bonds are repaid from the property taxes that are levied and collected by the county on behalf of the district. Now, the form of the purchase contract, the purpose of that document is to lock in the interest rate on our bond sale. So it's a, a document which is an agreement between us and Wells Fargo, a firm which was chosen through a vetting process and a competitive process which involved interviewing. And this firm, when it's gathered the necessary amount of investors to purchase all of our bonds, and should the bond sale results achieve our objectives of selling as many, as much bonds as possible under Prop E and while staying under the $29 targeted tax rate, once those objectives are reached, the district and Wells Fargo will execute this purchase contract and lock in the interest rate on our bonds. And once this contract is executed, the interest rate on our bonds are fixed and it cannot change, regardless of what may happen in the interest rate environment, regardless of what may happen in the geopolitical scene, regardless of what may happen in the macroeconomic sense. So let's say, after we execute this purchase contract and something were to happen and interest rates rise, we're protected from that. And our interest rates are locked in and set. So those are the purposes of these three documents. And I know you may have some questions, so I'll open up any questions you might have and turn it back to Mr. Maguire.
So if you have any questions from, about this item, for myself or Mr. Kim?
So I had a question, I know there are a lot of blanks, but I'm wondering about, we should know the maturity schedule, no?
Yes, so the maturity schedule is up to 30 years. We may elect to sell 29 years, or 28 years, or all of the 30 years. So that's to be determined on the sale, the bond sale date. The reason why it's left blank and not filled in yet is we don't, because we don't know the exact maturity amount. And that amount will be determined based on the interest rates we get from Wells Fargo. So hopefully that answers your question.
I would think, I was trying, I was thinking maybe it would depend on how, about keeping under the rate we promised.
That's right. That's right. The $29 targeted tax rate, yes.
But not necessarily, I don't understand the other, what you put in.
Oh, sure, sure. So let me elaborate on that. So what I meant with the interest rate on the bonds. So depending on what interest rates we get on the bonds and working under that $29 targeted tax rate, we may, let's mature, amortize more bonds in any particular year. So let's say, for instance, we get a lower than expected interest rate on our bonds. Then we may say, okay, we may not need a 30-year term bond. We may be able to issue all of the $11 million using only a 29-year term bond. But if the interest rates are, let's say, higher than what we may have planned, then we might say, okay, we need all of the 30-year term to stay under the $29 targeted tax rate. So that's why the term of the bonds is left blank currently.
And so the, the interest rate that you'd get on a 30-year term, say, that's kind of a guessing game as to how the interest rates are gonna be going in the future, how?
Yes, so we've, as a planning tool, have built in about 4.5% interest rate on our bond issue as a planning tool to use. So if the interest rates happen to be higher than that, then we may go all for 30 years. But if interest rates come in lower than that, we may be able to amortize the bonds in 29 years.
So the longer the term, I thought the lower the interest rate, given the projections that are... We just went for short-term bonds and we're not, we're not even getting 4%, are we? We're slightly under.
So longer, longer the bond term, the higher the interest rate.
Not under the current circumstances.
Well, the way the investors view it is, they value and they determine the interest rate based on the amount of risk they take. So let's say, for instance, if the, the duration of the risk they're taking is, let's say, five years, they might say, okay, that's not too long of a time for us. So we may buy your bonds at 2%, 3%, and I'm just making these numbers up. But if they say, oh, for buying a 30-year term bond, we're taking a risk for a much longer duration than the five-year term. So we may want to buy those bonds at 4%, which is a little bit higher than the five-year term duration bond. So that's, that's generally how it works. I know, you know, recently, and I, I know what you're getting at, I should think, recently, as a result of the Federal Reserve Board's to combat inflation... recently, as a result of the Federal Reserve Board's to combat inflation, we've seen a drastic rise in interest rates in a very short-term period. And that have resulted in some discrepancies in this logic that we're used to for the past decades. And that's probably what you may have witnessed recently.
I mean, it wasn't that long ago that 30-year mortgages were going for under 3%.
I know.
And that's why I'm thinking about the bond rates.
Right.
We always seem to get caught at the wrong time, either buying bonds or selling bonds.
You know, I actually did a review of the district's historical bond sales. And when we looked at it from a historical perspective, our rates were actually quite good. I saw some threes in there, I saw some little fours. So on a historical perspective, it's not that bad. You know, I'm reminded when I first started this profession about 20 years ago, I remember seeing interest rates in the 6%, believe it or not, so.
You know, our first mortgage, that first house my husband and I bought was at 6%, and that was the going rate.
Yeah.
I go back a lot for it, so I'm sorry.
All right, Ms. Harper?
Yes, so can you remind me again, what are we focused on for this $11 million project?
So this is the Limitless Learning Academy buildings as they currently stand. We need to move those as part of the Del Dios project because we have to move buildings off if we add it more because of the environmental impact of that. Also, to then do some things to, what I say, rehabilitate, remodel a little bit of some of the, one of the buildings at Del Dios to accommodate moving the Limitless Academy over there after those classrooms are moved out. And then also to continue to contribute to our finishing out our Mission Phase III project over there, where we're adding those two new buildings, modular buildings there that we had shown before.
Okay, and just to confirm, we have already addressed all of the issues that were presented in the bond issuance originally and that emergency, the emergency needs of our district. We've addressed all those. I'm just confirming that, because that's what we talked about last time.
Were you talking about the legacy projects? Or are you talking about?
No, no.
The event scene and like, security-related issues?
No, what was originally presented to the public as what our emergency needs were and what we needed this bond money for, which was like roofing and like underground plumbing and stuff like that. Have those, have those needs been met?
No, because we continue to have a lot of facility needs. I mean, the latest facility master plan where we looked at what the facility needs, I mean, it just keeps climbing. I mean, we've dealt with a lot of the, like, we dealt with our older schools. We dealt with HVAC. We've been dealing with roofing. But there's a lot of, there still continues to be needs, and we keep getting new needs because schools continue to get older.
And I understand that. I just, I want to make sure that was what was presented to the public and what was voted on in, what the public saw was, these are what we're going to address.
We continue to focus on those areas where the public saw that we were going to be addressing those needs. We continue to do that, to take care of those. And, you know, again, at those schools.
It still grows, of course, of course. It's not stagnant from eight, 10 years ago. I understand that. But I mean, that was the meat of that bond was, it was our, the.
The promises we made.
You're right.
Yes, that's what I want to make sure we're, we have adequately addressed, and we continue to adequately address that.
And to be honest, we're 10 years into this existing bond, and we're still looking at adding, you know, another $11 million that have worked.
There's some left.
Yeah.
And there's 16 million after that.
16 million after that. So we've, I mean, over the years, we've kept projects coming one after the other and done a lot of wonderful things throughout the community, so.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we can't argue with that. We've got some great school transformations out of it. I just, this is, I don't know when, you know, what the future holds, and I want to make sure our, again, our foundational issues are addressed, especially when you talk about plumbing and electricity and roofs and everything like that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So do we need a motion for this resolution? Move to approve Resolution Number 2324-13, authorizing the issuance of 2014 General Obligation Bond Series E. Do I have a second?
And actions related.
And actions related there. Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0? And number seven, end at seven.
We're going to have Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Levine, that will be talking to us about an opportunity to engage in digital voting.
Good evening, Board. Well, to start, Cabinet, we had this great idea. Couldn't wait to bring it to you. It's all our idea. Credit being due, former President, Mr. Olson brought this idea.
Take it.
Echo by now President Houston and all of you. So what we want to do is discuss digital voting at four meetings tonight. And so the what and the why. So when we first received this request, we looked at a couple of different options. Some of them were expensive, some of them were expensive and complex. What we wanted to do was avoid layering on an additional system that wouldn't add any value to the conduct of the board meetings. We initially looked at Board Docs, and at that time, Board Docs wasn't going to support what we were trying to do. We circled back on that and discovered that Board Docs does now support digital voting. And so the way that works is our board moderator, Michelle, has the ability to open and close digital voting on each board item. And then you, as board members, can vote from either an iPad or laptop so long as you're logged into Board Docs. And then our audience has the ability to track along and see the voting decisions by the board members. And so the way this looks, similar to what we do now when we come upon an item to vote, and after a first and second motion is made, Michelle would then open up digital voting. And you would see a pop-up box with the item to be voted on and have the ability to select either abstaining for voting or select nay or yes. And if we need to amend an item before voting takes place, we have the ability to do so. And then after you vote, you'll see that blue box there in the middle of the screen as confirmation how you voted. And if for some reason you needed to change your vote, you certainly have the option to do so. And if we moved on and we needed to go back, we could certainly go back to that item and reopen voting as well. And then for the audience, their view will slightly change to how we presented today. Board Docs refers to it as a scorecard. And all it really is, is just a summary of the discussion item, the motions that were made, and then the voting results as they take place. And then Michelle would drive the scoreboard. We would display it on the big screens for the live audience. They would also be able to see it on Zoom. And then you would be also able to see it on the monitors at the dais. And so the recommendation is we go ahead and pilot digital voting on the March 7th board meeting. But if you're ready, we could go ahead and try it out tonight on this one item. All right.
I'm logged in.
Let's go.
I'm ready.
So Michelle, if you would open that up. I'm going to switch views to the scorecard.
Can I just pick a first and second motion?
Yep, we need a first and second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
And all second. We have a first and a second.
Yeah, where am I supposed to look here?
All right, voting is open.
So if you notice, on the monitor at the dais, you can see the scoreboard.
Yeah.
We could take a look at the resolution on his display. Chris?
Approve the use of digital voting. I can change my vote, oh, wait. Come back. It disappeared. How can I change my vote?
It's in the right corner. No, it's in the, oh, the top right.
Oh.
So there should be a change button.
Oh, yeah, in the top right.
Sabotage my idea here.
No, no.
It disappeared, yeah, mine disappeared. That was so I couldn't change my vote.
Okay, what if I close it and reopen it? All right. All right, I'm reopening it. You all have to re-vote. Oh, sorry, it's reopened. Everybody has to re-vote.
Yeah, we have it.
It's very slow.
Oh, oh, that's where it comes back.
You're going to have to ask the board. Although I can mark it.
You are voting, can you change your voting, re-vote?
Yeah.
Oh, it went away. Oh, there it goes, okay. Nay, I voted nay now. It's my end, I'm against it.
I don't get it.
Where, yeah, okay, Doug's isn't, Doug's isn't coming back up.
I can, yes. I'm just waiting on two remaining members.
I'm going to change my vote, please.
Yes, I can manually input for you.
So I need, okay.
Which is what I've been doing the entire time.
Okay, but let's see where it goes. But you should have it at the top, too. When that goes away, it should be, see, just so I don't have this.
Oh, Ms. President Houston. President Houston, could you re-vote, please? Sorry, we closed and opened it.
I voted no.
You're all good.
So they changed the vote?
Yes, please.
Oh, no, there it is.
There you go. Yeah, and now I am closing it, and we are done. We're done. Okay. Passes 5-0.
Where's the scoreboard?
Oh, there, there.
Once you close it?
It's closed, it's closed.
Okay.
We just want to make Mark happy. It's really speeding it up.
They don't believe me.
I still like all the fear pressure of everybody. Vote away. Vote in my own conscience.
You got to save it. And then there's the final resolution.
My apologies. I forgot to click save. Yay, thank you.
Yeah, no pressure. We'll be more part of the meeting now.
Yes.
Nice, thank you.
We're only going to get better from here, guys.
Well, we can't get worse.
The only problem is the expulsions will slow me down. Like, when we modify them, I'll just have to quickly have some cut and paste.
Well, can we skip those, and you just write those down?
That's good.
Yeah.
It's easy for me, honestly. I just forgot to click save.
No, you don't need to do a roll call, though, because it's independence, this is the roll call.
Yeah, yeah, so then we don't have to worry about it.
But just the amendment that we do on the expulsions.
We'll be okay.
She can do that on the back end.
Okay, perfect.
No, you can do it on the back end. The motion, right. The motion is what's carried, whatever, it's amendment, and then it's voted on, and then she corrects that on the back end.
Got it. Okay, perfect.
That's just the minutes.
I'll have it ready, don't worry.
All right, move it on.
Sorry, I'm not the president. I'm with the vendors.
Pastor President, thank you for that information. Thank you for clarifying that point. And as we move down to P. 1, board members.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Enjoyed this past Saturday, spending time with my board colleagues and Dr. Ibarra and Joan. We had our workshop, or Glenn, not Joan. I was in another training today with a lady named Joan, sorry. A lot of meetings. Anyway, it's always good, I know we just do it kind of once a year, but it's good to spend some time outside of the formality of our meetings and focus on our goals and make sure that we're working as efficiently as we can, but also ensuring that, you know, we're united in our efforts even though we may have different philosophies and different ideas, that we all have the same objectives to serve the students and the families in this area. So enjoyed that time together. I know it takes a lot of forethought and work on with my board colleagues. And so I just have enjoyed that time. I know there's a lot of other activities that are going on this week. So I just want to thank all the staff that were involved in that. I understand the writing, the thing at Pear Valley went very well yesterday. So I want to thank all the staff and everyone who was involved in putting that on. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Spen Council meeting. A couple of questions that came up were, do vendors get trained? And I'm assuming that's for the after-school portion for the ELOP. I don't know, I forget what that was about. I apologize. Oh, that's what it was, thank you. Yes, so the what, the paras that we use outside companies to hire. See, this goes back to our board workshop. I appreciate it. Do they get trained? Because they, a lot of the feedback was that the ones that come from the outside vendors are having a harder time integrating into what the system is at that school or in that classroom.
They do. They are able to go through the similar training that we provide other new paras that come on board, so they have access to those pieces.
Are they required to do that, or they just have access to it?
They're required to do the online portion of ProAct specifically. And then the in-person component, that's something that they would have to come back to do, which is not necessarily required, that piece.
Yeah, because that seems to be something that's come up a lot is just the para-training. I mean, we've heard it again today, but just the para-training to make that more mandatory or even a time to work with the teacher, you know, that they're, that they're supposed to be supporting. They don't seem to have any time for that collaboration that's, you know, paid. So I think that that always seems to come up in all these meetings. And then also, another comment from the Spen Council was that, you know, when they have the assistant principals or some other admin designate, that seems to help a lot in the situations that might arise. They've seen the difference, obviously. I also attended the insurance committee meeting. Hopefully, next meeting, we'll get to really dig deep into our rates and try to find some relief for our employees because, I mean, rates are still going to go, I mean, they're, the projections for next year are another, I think, 7% to 12%, something in there, which is still outrageous. And again, I attended the workshop over the, on Saturday with our board and the CES, C? SEA. Yes, thank you, Communication Meeting today, which was always, it's always great to get to talk with our bargaining groups.
And I also enjoyed the board workshop. That's always a good reminder of honing what we're doing. I did attend the council PTA meeting in this room a week and a half ago. And just, again, absolutely outstanding. Our PTAs are so well-run, and that meeting is always very valuable. And Ms. Gardner, to your point about we need more parent involvement, I absolutely agree. But the effort that our district and our parent liaisons and our care team and our site administrators and our teachers are making to get parents involved, I think in many ways, we're the envy of other districts. many ways, we're the envy of other districts, because we do so much already. And yes, we need to do more, but boy, we make a huge effort led by our PTAs. I did like hearing from the speakers today about the need for being fully staffed with high-quality, well-trained parent educators. We've really improved that situation over the last couple of years, and one of the things that we have many, many excited students about at Orange Glen High School right now is our upcoming P3 hiring event, because last year, nobody knew what it was going to be. Nobody understood it at all, and we still hired our 16 to 18 new parent educators, one-day process. And now that people know what it's about, they've had friends that have gone through it who are being very successful, and in a lot of cases, students who have not been really successful in a school setting. I've got three in mind, one at Rock Springs, one at Oak Hill, one at Hidden Valley, I think, who were not real successful later on as students who have now found extreme success in a school setting and are passing on a lot to our students. So, I just, I hope that that P3 program is going to continue and be strengthened, because at least the three kids I know, they are now planning, they were previously planning on careers in, they didn't know what, and are now planning on lifetime careers as teachers. And being an instructional aide is just a step along the road, as it was for many of us.
If more of them realize that it's the pathway to the future.
It's the pathway.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a good way to present it, too. I know. This was stated, and I said that, too, especially with fast food workers' wages going up to $20 an hour.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
It's hard to compete, but you'll always be at that level if you're a fast food worker where you don't have the opportunity to progress. So, Zesty covered the insurance committee. Thank you for that. And the board self-evaluation, that was, I mean, the board members give up their Saturdays, and it was a Saturday morning, but even so, it was very much appreciated, because I think it helped us refocus on our mission and on our joint mission. I also had the opportunity to attend, represent the board of the writing celebration yesterday, and I was amazed at the turnout, given the weather. I thought it might be more likely attended this year, but I would say it was more heavily attended. But I also have to give a shout out to Orange Glen School, because I saw the most amazing work, and it was the only, actually, I know we're bringing back cursive writing, but it was the only example of cursive writing that I saw that was so amazing. Every, but down to the kindergarten, and what does my heart good always, is the spelling, perfect spelling on every paper. But there were other schools, I saw wonderful creativity, imaginations, and covering of subject matter that I wondered sometimes, you know, now it's going to be art. Was that an AI paper, or was it really, was it memorized? You know, that one. But I had to, I had to remember that our students are capable of wonderful things, and we're bringing it out of them. And on that, it's always, this happens to me sometimes serendipitously, this morning in the Union Tribune, there was an article, "Education System Abandons Rigor and Merit", and it was, it was a wake-up call. It talked to higher education, but I think even in the, in the high schools, in the lower grades, grade inflation and saying something's good enough. But in this district, I have to believe, and it's always, it's always been, I've always seen high expectations, and I think we should never let that go, because we owe that to our kids. So, if anyone's interested, it was in this morning's Union Tribune, I have one copy, if anybody wants to take over that.
I can include it.
And I think that was it. I hope to see, and yes, and we have a productive CSE meeting with our CSEA with their new board, and very good topics, a lot to think about. And looking forward to tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah.
To the Education Foundation event. It's always a fun, a fun event. Oh, you forgot. Yes.
I just thought, oh, I can't, whatever this is, I can't go to it.
You'd be the star.
Oh, something else. No, no. And that's it.
Thank you very much. And I just want to thank CS for the meeting this afternoon. I appreciate it, all the hard work from the board, and also, I want to recognize all staff for everything that they're doing. We really do appreciate everything that they're doing, and we're very grateful for the work that they've done, and we're looking forward to some really good outcome in the future. So, that's really nice to see that progress, and that is it.
Yes, I did receive two requests from board members for possible board meeting changes, so I'm going to exclude those options, to see if the board wanted to agree on the changes, and then we can bring it back for, to agendaize that. So, first one was from Mr. Houston, so the request is the August 15th, 2024. There's a request to change that from the 15th of August to either August 8th or the 22nd.
August 8th will be before school opens, correct?
Right.
So, I would prefer to go to, like, the 22nd.
22nd works.
But we were going to vote on it.
Yeah.
I need to know if it works.
Yeah. The 22nd, right?
All right.
And this next request was up.
October 10th to the 3rd.
Sep- October 10th to change that to October 3rd.
What are the ones we have?
What date is?
October, the board meeting, original board meeting date was October 10th, and the change would need to go to October 3rd.
And what date is the September meeting?
I have a, the 26th, one week before.
Oh, it's the 19th.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the 19th. He's correct.
It's two each part.
Yes.
I mean, there, there's no sense of having a meeting, and then it's later or another meeting.
Right.
Yeah, it would be, yes.
No, it doesn't always work. Just go like that. Okay, I'm pulling them up, sorry. Well, because my other conflict is the September 19th. I have a conflict on September 19th. But that's my choice, so I can.
Could we move it earlier in the week? Maybe do it from the 17th?
Yeah, the 17th's fine. So, I don't know if that matters with anything else.
Is October 3rd?
Wait a minute. The 17th of October?
No.
That's September.
Oh, September.
No, move the 19th, September 19th, the meeting from the 19th to the 7th, so that, so it doesn't affect Zesty's.
Although, I mean, we've got our staff used to Thursday meetings.
Don't bump the trend now, come on.
Okay, ours, whatever.
Just kidding.
I think we've done that twice this year.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Hold on, hold on.
Wait, hold on.
October to what?
October 3rd. That's what we're looking at.
To go to what?
From the 10th to the 3rd, October.
What happened to the, I thought you were talking about Tuesday.
I know, oh, that's September 18th.
That'll be the next one.
I was messing him up. I was messing him up, sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, October 3rd's fine for me.
Okay. And then the last, the third one would be, the final one would be the request from September 19th, moving it from Thursday to Tuesday to September 17th.
I'm okay with that.
I. I can't. Hold on. That should be fine. Yeah. We're at the joint two council meetings.
Okay, man.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So, we'll put this on the next agenda, and then have the board vote on that.
I know. And you said August 22nd?
Yes.
August 27th, October, yes, and then October 3rd, and the September 17th. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Why does my calendar say November 14?
Yep, November 14th is one.
Oh, November, I'm sorry. Yes, September 19th. That's October.
Yeah, August.
August 22nd.
I believe everybody is in agreement.
Yeah.
We'll agendaize after the next meeting. Fantastic.
So, as you know, we have all of our schools participating in flag rugby, and our games actually begin on Saturday. So, if you are available for the next several Saturdays, we'll have games that are always happening at RingCon, and that's for elementary and for middle. And I'll attach, we'll include the schedule again in the Friday update.
Are the fields going to be playable this week?
It's supposed to be sunny, we're hoping.
It won't be a muddy mess.
True, and true.
Saturation.
That's going to be fun, right? Tear up the field.
I guess I'm not, not my fields, I guess.
I just wanted to take a brief minute to talk about one of our custodians. He recently passed away. He was started with us in November of 2020, when this district was opening at a time when custodial work was, was never more important, to keep our students and our staff safe so we could open our schools. And he stayed with us all the way through the summer until he had to leave work, and I was hoping we could just do a brief moment of silence in honor of Patrick Docstatter, who was one of, one of our custodial crews for several years here.
Thank you.
I just wanted to piggyback on Mr. Paulson for P3. Amy has been working, and HR has been working to really expand it with some other types of grants, and really, we're looking forward to interviewing more really exciting and interesting high schoolers and adding to the ranks of the students getting their AA and then getting their BA, so it's really exciting what's happening.
I just wanted to share, we're into a fourth week of an eighth grader from Bear Valley Middle School shadowing some of our IT techs and engineers. It's part of the internship program started by our head services and IT folks, and it's going well, some real-life experience and skills and learning taking place, and so we're excited about that. We're going to continue to grow and expand that with three high school students starting a program on February 22nd.
Can I do one more shout-out? To all administrators, teacher, and teachers, and aides at every site who have had several straight days of indoor recess, I think we need to recognize all of those individuals. Outstanding. Thank you very much.
That's a long week. It's a long week.
So, our next board ma- board meeting, which will be a board study session, will be held on February 22nd at 6:00 PM. And our regular scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, March 7th, 7:00 PM here at the, that's going to be the distribution. We have no closed session, so we will be this meeting, this adjournment.
Can we just move it away?
Yeah.
Doesn't go.
It's all right. Friends that are going to be here, fast forward.